How about an old fashioned at, uh, at McGarther Place? We would call it even. You can watch me.
Is that the... That's the wrong one. See? Just away for a few weeks and you forget how, which button to push. Uh, so just want to welcome everybody and call to order this special meeting of the Sonoma City Council. And for this meeting, just so people are aware, people will be given time to comment on this, the subject of this special city meeting. But any other public comment that you wish to make that is not on the agenda will be made, we will call for those at the regular city council meeting. So any comment at this point is just for comments regarding the special meeting agenda for tonight. And so I'm calling the meeting to order and so this is, meeting is in regards to the presentation and third public hearing to review and gather feedback on draft boundary maps and the city's voting district pursuant to election code section 10010A1 California Voting Rights Act. And there, I am going to turn this over to our city manager.
Great, thank you Mayor. And as you mentioned, tonight we're here to talk about the districting process. This is meeting number three on this. We still have a few more public meetings to go before this is finalized and we'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. Um, and tonight we have three goals for the city council and the public. Is to receive the presentation on the maps. This is the first chance to see the maps that were created by the public and by our consultants. Provide feedback on those maps, making direction on the makeup of the structure of the electoral body. And then feedback on which maps do you want us to pursue further. And so to go into more detail on that process and to answer questions, we have Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners, who is the consultant on this project, who will give this presentation and be here to answer questions for you. So I'll turn it over to you, Paul.
Thank you and thank you for having me. Again, my name is Paul Mitchell. I'm the owner of Redistricting Partners and we've worked on CVRA conversions, racially polarized voting analysis, redistricting in California, over a hundred cities, counties, special districts, and then nationally. Um, we've done this work as well for a lot of states and other jurisdictions. So I'm here to go through our third hearing, which is the unveiling of maps. So the first two hearings, we didn't talk about actual, you know, lines or where things would be drawn because we wanted to give the public a chance to get all the information, give input before we started drawing maps. And so let me turn this guy on. I'm going to go over real briefly the traditional districting principles in order to maybe help people get brought up to speed a little bit more. But if there are questions that people who are seeing this on TV have, then the first hearing where I presented, I think rather long presentation going over, a lot of that information in detail is still available on the website. So we use the Fair Maps Act in California, which essentially took the principles of the State Redistricting Commission and put it down to municipalities. And it has been updated since having passed in order to kind of meet the challenges that the law faced as it was being implemented. But the main criteria, criteria we use for drawing districts is born out of the Fair Maps Act and federal and state law. The first idea is that districts are going to be equally sized based on decennial census population. Uh, districts are going to be contiguous, meaning that they're going to be whole pieces. Now there are, in the city of Sonoma, what we call islands, which are little parts of the city that are not adjacent to the city. Uh, so we will draw those to be as closely adjacent to the city. But other than that, the districts will be contiguous. One of the key things that we looked at in the process of developing maps is this third item, which is maintaining communities of interest. And the idea with this is imagine a fictional state. And in that fictional state, you had an area where there were more old people and an area that was more of a desert community and an area that was more beach community and an area that was more college towns. You would want to have representatives elected to the legislature or to Congress from that area that represented the different communities. You don't necessarily serve the public well by having a legislator who's got one foot in the old, you know, old community, one foot in the young community, one foot in the surfer community, one foot in the, you know, high income, one foot in the low income. They can't necessarily serve the needs of all those groups at the same time. So having representatives elected from areas that protect communities of interest and elevate them and their issues before whatever body they're elected to is kind of one of the key criteria. Having districts that are easily identifiable is kind of the reality check from the public. When they see the map, can they figure out where they live, what district they're in? Does it make sense to them? If we drew districts where it looked like, you know, five octopuses hugging, it would not necessarily make sense to people as to why the district lines are drawn like that. So having district lines that are identifiable, follow natural, manmade and, and other boundaries, uh, that's another criteria. The final criteria is that districts stay compact. And in the first presentation, I defined compactness in states' unique law regarding that. But for kind of the layperson idea is when we see a district, we want more squares and circles. We don't want weird shapes in the districts. We want them to be kind of tightly compact. Now, we had 16 maps submitted by the public prior to the seven day posting deadline. If any maps have been submitted since then, they can be looked at at your next hearing. But the law requires that if we're discussing maps, uh, they, we only discuss maps and only take action on maps that have been public for seven days so that the public has had the opportunity to see what we're talking about and comment on them. It's not allowed in, in the state of California anymore, like was historically done in maybe the nineties and two thousands, where somebody walks in at the meeting, says, "I've got this new map. My brother drew," and everybody passes it. Like that can't happen anymore. We have to have maps be public for seven days. So we had, uh, nine maps drawn that were five district composition and seven maps drawn which were four district composition. Now, somebody might say, "Well, what's the difference there?" The difference is in the four district composition, you would have an elected mayor. Now you have a lot of leeway as to how you would arrange that if you did do four plus a mayor. You could, as an example, have like some cities have two-year mayors. You could have four-year mayor. You could say, "We want four-year mayor, but we want them to be elected in the presidential election cycle, which is usually higher turnout." So in the first implementation in 2026, we'll have a two-year term. And then in 2028, we'll have four-year terms from there out. You have a lot of flexibility on how you do that. But in the five district scenario, you would have a rotating mayor. So that's the main difference there. Um, the, like I said, the districts maps that are being submitted now, if somebody's watching TV right now and they're drawing maps on the Districtor Tool, we can consider those at the next meeting. Um, and one important thing is that when we drew our maps, and as will be shown in the presentation, we took the draft maps that we saw, looked for themes, and tried to incorporate those things in our draft maps. And each of our draft maps will be able to talk about which community maps those were kind of based on. If one of the Districtor maps that was submitted that has the five-digit number, some of them have little names too. If one of those maps is a map we really love and we have maps A, B, C, D, E, F, well, you could make a new map G, or H, or I, or J. We could elevate any of those other maps to be a techni-, you know, considered a draft map. You can also demote any of our maps. If you don't like A, B, or C at all, then at the next hearing, we'll be considering, uh, you know, D, uh, D, and F. And A, B, and C will be kind of parked to the side, not being seen as ones that are really seriously being considered. So it's really fun when we do these districtings to look at multiple public submissions and identify themes in the ma-, in the drawing of the maps. So both in the four district construction, which are the ones on the right, and the five district construction, the ones on the left, we have kind of themes around what communities are being kept together. So, uh, as you can see on, uh, the, the ones on the left here, you have the idea of eastern districts, both along Nathanson Creek or along First Street as the boundaries. This is one I really like and I think is important because this idea on the western districts, you have this idea of do we keep the western district and that southern part of the western district on the left side, the green area? The southern part of that is the mobile home parks. Do we keep that together with the area to the north of it? Or like the maps on the right, do we split that area? And that's an interesting thing that we've seen throughout these maps is a consistent either keeping those together or splitting them. And what's, I did come out here earlier today. I rode my bike along the bike trail and down through the mobile home park and up Broadway and, and kind of went around actually one of our draft plans and basically rode the plan to see what it was like. And that was very interesting to see the relationship between those communities on that kind of idea of an eastern district. This idea of a southern district, either keeping it together or splitting it, you can see one or the other, and almost can think about as an abstract concept, is that something you want to see? Do you want to see that southern area be together or do you want to see it be split? And when you split it, if you're splitting it like on Broadway or splitting it somewhere else. We also took data from the census and looked at data on homeownership and income. Now this data is imperfect. It's drawn at the census block group level, which is areas that are roughly, you know, 1,500 people. Uh, it is an estimate, a five-year rolling estimate. So it's going to be a little bit, uh, you know, if a new population moved in there in the last two years, uh, that might not be fully reflected yet. But you can see some relationship here to homeownership and income with some higher and lower income areas. Um, but again, this can be different. Income might be determined by annual income. So if somebody's a retiree and they still have a lot of money or their homes are expensive, it won't necessarily be, um, calculated in there. But this is some data that can be looked at as well. The other data that was brought to our attention, I think, is really interesting, especially where we are right now in this idea of potentially a northern district, is this fire hazard, uh, map that shows the northern part of the district, almost that entire bike path that, that I took in this, you know, uh, severe fire hazard area. So I'm going to go through the six maps that we've drawn. I'm going to talk about each of them and their population deviation, meaning how close they are to perfectly equally populated. I'm going to talk about what map was used to create them and what communities in these maps were kept together or the idea was to keep them together. And I'll start here with draft map A. So first off, draft map A has two, actually three distinct things that we've talked about today. The idea of a northern district. The idea of a western district with the mobile home parks in the area to the north of the mobile home parks. And the idea of a compact southern district. And then the dividing between the green and the blue districts is Broadway. The, before I switch, the public map on that, if anybody wanted to look at it, 280671 was the starting point for this and then we made modifications from that. We can see a little zoom in of that. Now, the population deviation is the difference between the largest district and the smallest district. So if one, if the largest district is 2% over and the smallest district is 2% under, that's a total of 4% total deviation, the largest to the smallest. So we're, here we have a 1.9 underpopulated district, which is just 41 people less than the ideal number, and a 1.5 highest populated district, which is just 32 people over the ideal population. That creates a 3.4 total population deviation. You can see that's just 73 people. So these are narrow, small margins that we have in the total population deviation. And this data, as we remember from the first presentation, is 2020 census. So it's old. This isn't actually represent probably exactly the numbers now, but it's the data that we have to use for this process. Below, the table below is what shows the, for layperson kind of eligible population. The census calls it the citizen voting age population. And you can see there the ethnic composition of these districts based on those voting populations. And you can see that District Five in this map has a 22.9% Latino citizen voting population. Uh, in the top table, it's at 23% Latino population. So if we go back here, that's District Five, this northern one. Draft map B, uh, has a 5.2% deviation. Uh, it is similar to two different draft maps that are listed there. It takes the mobile home communities and instead of going fully north and creating a fully western district, it splits that. It does have a mostly northern district and then it splits that southern district area when we look at those kind of concepts. It keeps the area around that plaza kind of together in total all the way around, whereas a lot of the other maps are going to meet there and start making divisions. This total map deviation, 5.2. Draft map C, another, this is the third and final five district map. Again, western district, a whole western district with a mobile home park to the north of it. Uh, the southern portion split there on Broadway. And then instead of having one concise northern district, that is split off as well. So you have, uh, five districts with kind of, I think, reflective of the trade-offs in, uh, in some of these discussions. Now we get to four district plans. Four district plans are going to be larger than the five district plans. Um, just they're going to be larger in population. They still have to maintain a 10% total population deviation, but that 10%, it's also going to be a larger raw number of people. Uh, this was draft map, uh, this is based on a plan submitted under 278429. It does create the area around the historic plaza area, the mobile home communities on the west side, and it creates a southern district, that green district, and then a really strong eastern district. You can see that a little blown up. By the way, on the website, you can click on any of these maps to get a web version. So if you're watching this from home, you can go on the website, find the map, click for the map version where you can search an address. So if you want to say like, "Where do I live in this district?" You could type it in and it would show you exactly where you are. This is the total plan deviation here. The, one district's under by 2.8, the other district's over by 5.7. You can see the total population difference there is over 200 people. So we're talking a larger raw number of population creating that deviation, but still within the 10%. Draft map E, 5.2, 5.2% deviation based on 284370. Now, again, on the west side, you're completely splitting the west side. Uh, you're putting the mobile home park with areas that go towards the central part of the city. You have a strong southern district and a strong eastern district. But this is a different composition than we've seen. Because the four districts, you do create, I think, rather compact plans because you're not having to do as much nipping and tucking to get to that actual population equality. So in a way, some of the four district maps look simpler because there's fewer districts and you have a little bit more buffer in that population equality. You can see the, the population deviations. Draft map F, uh, this one creates the northern district. So population deviation of 5.2. Draft map plan, uh, or Districtor Plan 285422. You have the plaza area in the northern district, which is something you can't really do as effectively in the, uh, like draft plan A has a similar northern district, but it can't reach out to go get to the plaza area. You have a western district that takes in, uh, the mobile home community and goes north. It looks very similar to the draft, to what is in draft plan A. Um, and then the southern area is split. And in this one, it's not split along, along Broadway like it is in some other plans. Um, it's split along the creek. I don't remember the name there. This shows the total population deviations under 10%. Now, where we're at is we're at this third hearing. This is the first chance for you and the public to see draft maps and start to react. It is almost where we switch from a conversation about abstractly communities of interest and abstractly about how redistricting works to people actually seeing lines on a map and being able to respond to, "Hey, why is the person who lives across the street from me in a different district?" Or "Why is the district drawing, you know, why is it going down Broadway? Why isn't it going down a different street?" So you have a change in the entire conversation in some agencies where instead of talking about abstract ideas, uh, you start talking about very discreet individual lines. "Why can't you move this over one street? Why can't you move this over one street?" So it does change the whole conversation. You're also entering where we want to maybe cull the number of maps that we have, maybe not have six maps going to the next hearing. Um, if there are some public maps that were submitted, maybe we want to elevate one of those. Uh, but you get a chance to kind of set the stage for the fourth hearing. And like I said at the first hearing, the fourth hearing is kind of the most important hearing. Because at the fourth hearing, you really want to draw that down to maybe one, maybe two maps, a real small number of maps. Be able to put that out to the public and allow the public to give you real concrete feedback on a map you're seriously considering. Otherwise, if you go to the last meeting and there's 19 maps, the public might not know what map is really being considered. They might just be complaining about something in a map that isn't one you're even thinking about passing anyway. And so it makes the public comment less effective than if you can really give the community a, a chance to see, "What are we really considering doing?" And that would be by narrowing down the draft maps in the fourth hearing. So, um, I'll be here to discuss anything if you have any questions. Uh, like I said, the idea is to identify some plans you might prefer. Maybe first at least determining whether you want four or five districts would be helpful. If there are potential changes, we can discuss them. I do think that one of the things, I'm going to talk about technically how you adjust maps for a second. If you see a map, and it's really good to do this on Districtor and we can maybe do live line drawing if you needed at the next hearing. But if you go onto Districtor and look at a draft map and you want to make a change, there's three types of changes. One is to just move a line. You bring it in, you're still within 10%, you're done. That's just a move. I need to move this up one street. You move it up one street. The deviations are still okay. You're good. The second is a swap. You move something from District Five into District Four and you're like, "Oop, District Four is now too small and District Five is too big." So you move something back from District Four to District Five. So you're swapping population between two districts. That can be pretty easy too. The third type of move is a rotation. So you say, "Okay, District Five, I want to take this population from District Four. Now District Five's too big and District Four's too small. So District Four is going to take something from District Three. Now District Four is good, but District Three is under. And so now I need to go to District Two, take District Two population, move it over, take it to District One. What District One population goes into District Five." And you've now moved the lines through the whole city, done this big rotation. Rotation could be among three districts or it could be among all five districts. I've seen rotations, you know, in congressional redistricting that can take 12 districts. So, uh, when you're doing these, it's not always super easy to say, "I want to move a line" without recognizing that what you're moving might cause a domino effect that would affect multiple districts. Um, and then getting any direction from you on new maps. So if you were to say, "Hey Paul, we really like this map, but can you make a version of this where Broadway is the dividing line?" Um, then we could go back to the drawing board and see if there's something we could do and present it to you. And that's it. I'm happy to, uh, take any questions or wait for after-public comment.
Any questions? I'm, thank you so much. I'm glad you're here.
Uh, what's, what's sort of our game plan here, Madam Mayor?
So what we're going to do is we're going to do questions and then we're going to do public comment. And we're going to come back and have a discussion. And the goal would be, I think, let's do the questions first, get the public comment.
So this is questions of the consultant at this time?
Of the consultant. And then when we come back from public comment, I think we can decide, "Do we want to address the four versus five first?" Oh, good. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a quick one. If I read correctly, uh, as our consultant, you have not identified any communities of interest. That burdens on us.
Um, the, we have, um, not, I'd say that in each of our hearings, we've talked about things like the mobile home community, right? And the mobile home park community is by definition a community of interest. We, it has a name, it's geographically located, and they have kind of issues as a community that might be different than the issues of somebody else in the city. So at the end of the process, we're actually going to produce a community of interest report that's going to list all the communities of interest that were discussed in the process and if they were kept together or if they were divided. It's a new part of the law. We have to do that. So, but it's not like we create a, you know, a, a definition for every exact community of interest. Somebody might say, "Well, the downtown area is a community of interest." We might not have a perfect idea of exactly what the downtown area. I mentioned the bike path. The bike path could be a community of interest. The, so we'll come up with those communities of interest and take in information to try to do that report at the end. But if you were to say, "Hey Paul, there's this one community of skateboarders and they all skateboard in this one area and you haven't done anything to address those, then we can start looking at them and consider them community of interest." It's very fluid is what I guess I'm trying to say.
So with, uh, other than the mobile home parks that are, are quite definable, uh, I don't recall us talking about anything else in our previous two meetings about identified communities of interest, but, um...
The fire zone area would be a kind of a thing, talking about a community of interest? Those kind of things, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Could you say it louder? The plaza, yeah.
And there is the east-west.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So there's, there's, there's like four or five. So, do you have questions, uh, Councilmember Deng?
Uh, right now, I'm still in the, you know, learning. You know, I don't have any, uh, you know, educated question. Yeah, I want to listen.
How about you, Councilmember Gurney?
Well, I do have some questions, but I wanted to hold those, I think. Uh, yeah, I'm still skeptical of the whole concept and only being a small community, 2.5 square miles, 10, 11,000 people. Um, and I'm just kind of curious what your experience has been with other small communities. And I know Hillsburg's going through this now. Um, what has your experience been with regards to, what's the smallest district you can have?
Well, um, I don't have the numbers on me. The city of Bradbury has been in districts for a long time. It's an LA County, like San Gabriel Valley city. I think each of their districts is 400 people.
Yeah.
Um, really tiny. Uh, I know sometimes when you get to smaller jurisdictions, uh, well, let's qualify this. There's, there's two types of jurisdictions that get concerned about, "Hey, if we go to districts, how are we going to find people to run for these seats?" You know? Uh, we did a redistricting for a water district that included Isla Vista, which as you might know is like all college students. And they're like, "Who, if we draw districts and Isla Vista can't be split because it's a community of interest and we draw a district that's Isla Vista, that means we're going to have to recruit a student to run for the water board." Uh, because it was like all student housing. And so that type of concern comes up. And then the other type of concern is like, "There's a small area. How are we going to find somebody?" And the fact is that the first implementations of new district lines can sometimes have a little bit of a learning curve, a little bit of a process for people to get used to it. So, uh, we've seen some agencies that the first time that they have an election, nobody runs for it, so they have to appoint, which I think would be the process for you if you had a vacancy because nobody ran for it. But once you appoint somebody from that area, believe it or not, you start to create a political culture there. I remember Woodland, which is kind of near Sacramento, everybody said, "You can't draw districts because nobody ever runs south of Main Street." Well, nobody ran south of Main Street because everybody south of Main Street knew they couldn't win an election. But once they created districts and people started getting elected from there, now they have more vibrant political community. And so as an example, I don't know, but you know, maybe the mobile home park doesn't necessarily create a bounty of political candidates. And somebody might be saying, "If we create a district that's Mobile Home Park North there, which is kind of like socio-economically kind of more cohesive potentially, then maybe that's not going to be a place where you're going to get a lot of candidates to run." But once you do have a council member here that's from an area that maybe isn't normally represented, you're going to see them creating political infrastructure there that might not already be there.
Right.
I don't mean to, you know, be, uh, preaching about the benefits of districts, but that is one of the things I've seen.
Thank you. I think I'll sleep a little better tonight. Thank you.
So I have just a, a couple of questions. One is, when we looked at districts that maybe have an 8.5% deviation, what is the process, um, for, you know, the number of people in that district? How often? Do you just wait to the next census to see if it goes over nine? You know, so for those, and then that's the same thing, kind of similar question with annexation. If you annexed like a small area, uh, at what point would you have to actually do another census count?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll address both of these. First off, when you're doing districting in an area like this where it is a deviation of 30 people, I mean, if you press me, I don't know if I believe that the census is, you know, actually accurate to a 30-person number to begin with, you know? And so we have to base it on that data set, and we don't get a chance to actually look and see how that population's changed until 2030, where we're going to get a new data set that's going to give us the new numbers. Now, when that new data set comes out, you could find yourself, oh my gosh, magically all our districts are balanced. But the state law still requires you to do this whole entire process, five hearings, start from scratch, the whole thing. You might end up just passing your existing map, but you have to do the five hearings and everything. The second thing is annexation. If you annex population, that new population would have to go into the most adjacent district. And if there was a question, I think you'd have a lot of flexibility to say, well, we determine this to be the most adjacent district. Now, if you annex something that's more than 20 percent of your population, you have to do full redistricting.
And what is the timeline that you have to do that in?
I don't know that there's a specific timeline. I would guess before the next election unless the registrar told you that you were too late to get it done before the next election, something like that.
All right. Thank you. And I think that is, I think you also described kind of the key thing about major arteries.
Yeah, I mean, when I rode down Broadway, turned off MacArthur and onto Broadway when I was riding around town, I noticed it immediately four-lane road. And I was kind of like, where am I? Like, it really does stand out as a major artery and a potential dividing line that makes sense, both from, you know, communities maybe not being as connected on both sides of a major four-lane road, and also potentially because when you look at a map of, say, it's understandable to voters, that would make sense, that it's a major road. But I want to tell you the other side of that coin. The other side of that coin is you might say, Paul, there's traffic issues there. They've been wanting to do, you know, a trolley down the middle of that road for 20 years, and they can never get it done. But if they created a district where it was both sides of that big seat, or big road, and you could create a compact district and elect somebody who represents that major road, you'd be able to get some project like that done. Healdsburg had this exact issue. Healdsburg Avenue, you had some people that said, we want to create Healdsburg Avenue as the thoroughfare, so, because it makes sense to have a west side and east side of Healdsburg Avenue. But there were other people that said the businesses on both sides of Healdsburg Avenue should both be in the same district, and so they want to make sure the district includes the both sides of Healdsburg Avenue. So again, trade-offs. What's important is that you're having the conversation, you're doing it eyes wide open, you're contemplating the fair maps act criteria when you make that decision, but it's your decision.
Mayor, I have a question right now. And during this process, I, and I'm thinking about, we have the two islands that is not in the city limit. One is a Chinatown, and another is close to the Napa Road. If any, then a chance, or totally separated topics, including them, because from the community interest perspective, they in that area, it's possible, and we can include these two islands into the redistricting or totally different topics.
So when we see, like, you can see part of it there, but you see it better, I think, on this map. When you see those islands, it's really just put it with the most adjacent area. Now, I have seen districtings where somebody says, well, that's nearby with the red district, but the way you drive to there is through a road that goes into the purple district, so it should go into the purple district. So you could consider putting that in the district, that it's the closest to it, the way the crow flies? Or you could put it in the closest district based on how you would get there by traveling it, driving it, or something like that. But I think in both cases, those areas would go into whatever's closest geographically, that eastern district. They could be split, too. If you had a full southern district, you could have, let me see one of the southern district ones. In this green one, you have one of those islands going into District Two, and the other district going into District Three. The other island going into District Three. So they go into different ones as well.
Thank you.
Do I see any other questions? If not, we will open it up for public comment. So anybody wishing to make public comment can step up now.
Tom Conlon here. I live outside the city limits, but I am active in city affairs. And I did, this is a fascinating exercise. I've learned a lot by using the map tool. Let me start by saying, I took a look at the communities of interest tool, but I don't think I saved any maps to the public. But basically what I did is I simply used the ethnicity, self-selected ethnicity variable in the census, and took a look at where the communities of interest by ethnicity might lie in the city. My finding from that analysis was that we have a couple of, we have a great concentration, greater concentration of Latino residents on the west side of town, and very high concentration of Caucasians on the east, especially lower east side of town. So then I put together, I think I published only one map to the public that you have in front of you tonight. I think it's the last one of the five districts on the list. In general, I would recommend not going with four districts, but instead going with five unless you do plan to change your entire form of governance, to have a strong city mayor and a weaker city manager. And I don't think that frankly would suit the city of Sonoma. I think you should stick with the equal city council members as you have currently, as Healdsburg has also decided to do. Furthermore, I do encourage you to really try to get those deviance numbers per district as low as possible. I think that's an important fairness criteria. And I may have other comments in further meetings, but I'm running out of time, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Other commenters?
Hi, my name is Sedro Nathan. I live in the city. I love maps. Who doesn't love maps? They're really fun to look at, decision-making, and seeing the elements that went into this map, looking at the fire hazard components, where people live. And so we have 38 miles of street in the city of Sonoma, and I've walked all 38 miles at this point. And to me, looking at whether it's five districts or four districts is not as important as understanding the context, something that's known as context-sensitive design, and thinking about these communities of interest. And so having walked all the streets and interacted with people along the way, and interacted with people from the Valley of the Moon Garden Club, and so having some strong voices from there, hearing from them, I have a little bit of understanding of some of these communities in these various districts. And so, and I've also done a bit of mapping and played with this tool. This tool was super easy to use. It was fantastic. And so maps really help with decision-making. Anybody can make decisions with this super easy map. I loved it. The older population, vulnerable population, lives along the west side. And so having those vulnerable populations that, we've been talking about the mobile home park, but most of our elder care homes are also along the west side, and people who are at risk are along some of these areas. And so understanding where those communities are, and making sure that these, this could be used as a tool for decision-making, easy decision-making by our city staff, and making sure that we can facilitate infrastructure issues. This kind of districting can also help with that, for fire safety issues. And so I think helping make sure that those districts come together because people will get engaged around their districts, around those kind of issues as well. So fire, safety, mobility, those communities can come together, too. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, we have more public comment. And please state your name.
Armando Zimmermann. I live in Sonoma. I'm lost, is, I understand that maybe the impetus for this whole process is the trying to avoid litigation regarding violations of the California Voting Rights Act? And I'm just totally lost in terms of the, what I haven't, maybe I haven't studied enough, and I'll admit that, but what are the main criteria in the Voting Rights Act that relate to how we would redistrict? I mean, certain things are said and done. I mean, they, you know, there's older populations, as has been pointed out. We have wealth issues that are pretty much set. We have, maybe not age, I'm not sure about that. So I haven't seen the criteria from the Voting Rights Act that would be, how would I say, almost in a, this is the main criteria that we're trying to stay out of trouble on. This is the second one, this is the third one. Am I looking at that in a, how would I say, a dumb way? Or, I just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. No thoughts or questions or doubt? So would anybody else like to come and make a comment? All right, now I'm going to take it back to, I'm going to close the public hearing, thank you, and we're going to take it back to council members and for discussion. And I would like to see from the council if you would like to start with the four or five discussion, so that that way we're not, we're looking, then determining which maps that we would be looking at. Any comments on that? Excuse me, Councilmember.
That's all right. Call me Sandra. Patricia. In fact, I answer to pretty much anything. So I looked at all the maps and, you know, having sort of been in the business, Paul and I go way back and looking at elections over the years, I said this at the beginning, I was very concerned about the, having very small districts. And so my preference is four. I don't think, you know, that requires a strong mayor. I mean, Windsor has, is, that's how they did it. Petaluma, that's, you know, as well. You still have the same, you know, general law, city, and you can decide how you want to use that position. It could be, you could have a strong vice mayor, you know, position that is, you know, empowered to be a co-person or whatever. So that doesn't concern me. I am more interested in making sure we have districts that make sense, that have enough people in them, that are in the communities of interest, that, so that's my, that would be my preference on that issue. And then I can talk about later which maps look the best. For either way, yeah.
Councilmember Gurney?
All right, so to answer the question of four versus five, I can see pros and cons of either direction. I think, I think the community may be better served by having five districts because there's representation. My concern with five districts is that your representatives are focused on that district versus the community at large. And that could be, that could be problematic, and maybe not. And maybe over time, it just strengthens the way the community works. So I can go either way. And, you know, the strong mayor does create a certain amount of potentially political tension that hasn't previously existed in this community. So again, that's something that probably would evolve over time, but those are the things that I think about when I look at this. But I actually can go either way, and we'll see what everybody else thinks.
Councilmember Deng?
Thank you, Mayor. Our district, our city is very small already, you know? And even though right now I couldn't, you know, catch up, you know, that is, I heard a lot of the comments, and the people want to stay as is right now, and the northern redistricting, because we used to be very united. And another thing is very ironic, you know? And the purpose for this act, for this law, that is to encourage everybody participate in local politics, and especially encourage minorities. But on our existing, you know, city council, you and me, we already 40 percent, that is not, you know, white. We need to encourage white people to participate in this, you know? But anyway, you know, in the long term, and I still support with the redistricting, especially we can encourage our young generation participate. So in this way, and I prefer, so the, you know, averagely, and the community interests, and combine it together, so the, I prefer than five districts. In this way, it's more equally, and some, and the young people get a chance, more chance to stand up, to participate on the local election. Thank you.
Councilmember Wellender? Vice Mayor Wellender, I'm sorry I keep saying that. I'm so sorry.
It's wrong. It's wrong. Thank you. At this point in time, based on what I've reviewed in terms of the mapping and how it's divided up, I believe that if one of the goals, suggested goals behind districting and carving up a community even as small as ours, is that it makes the opportunity to run for the position more tenable in terms of not so costly, I would support at this point to go with five districts and not four. And I think that the rotational mayor has worked well to date. I think that as my fellow councilman had stated, potentially, we go with a, at-large, could become quite political. And I think that it would be better, at this point, served with simply going with the five in rotation. And I, that's it.
Thank you. Well, you know, I can argue either side of this. I'm pretty good at arguing both sides. I have a tendency towards four for a couple of reasons. One of that there's larger areas to draw from for people, and I think also, I do like the idea that one position is an at-large position that is voted on by all the constituents of our city. I think one of the ways that you could eliminate some of the ideas about, well, if you have a at-large mayor, does that create kind of more of a political environment? I think we could decide that, you know, we're actually maintaining our same level of governance, and we still have a very strong city manager, because the reality is, these are not paid positions, I mean, we get paid something, $300 a month, but they're not, they're basically volunteer positions. And so it takes a really unusual person that for four years is going to want to take the role on of a mayor that's going to have a higher level of responsibility than what we have for the mayor currently. And I, so that's, and we could go to eliminate kind of that concern with a two-year mayor. You know, so that's the other way to do it. And then for me, the question about that is the expense of, you know, to the city of those elections, you know, that cost. We do it, we tend to do it every two years anyway, which is true. Okay, so eliminate that last thought. So my tendency is to go with the four. And I will say, I know for people that, because I know a lot of people are like, lost about, like, where are we and why are we doing this? I think that is, it's, I've kind of moved to, we are doing this, and what are the benefits of doing this? And how do we best look at what the process we're doing to get the best benefit for the city? There are, in going through this process, I think you realize there are communities of interest that may not be represented by the current, you know, the current council. For example... For example, you know, all the people that live around the plaza, you know? That's not necessarily represented currently. Not that I'm saying it has to be our criteria, but I've just, it's opened my eyes to certain communities of interest that I hadn't thought of before, and how that plays out. And then the idea of, you know, areas that have a high number of renters versus homeowners, and really having them represented on the city council. So that's my comment. Yes? Mr. Gurney? John? Whatever you want me to call her? All right. So it seems like we are, we have two people that are kind of, you know, on the four side, two people on the five side, and one person that's in the I could go either way side. So it looks like, you know, we're kind of at the yellow brick road. You could go that way, you could go that way.
Is that a mayor? Just a suggestion? And, you know, I heard, you know, I heard three and two. But if we could just put that in a parking lot for now, and like, maybe focus on the maps, because maybe that would, that might help clarify our positions. You know, when you actually are looking at a map of five versus four in a similar, you know, using similar landmarks as divisions, you know, it might make it more real, and people, you know.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Why don't we, I think maybe what we could do is look at the first maps for each of those areas. Look at, not every map, but let's look at the one for the four, and then one for the five, and discuss them in the ways of like, what are the issues that come up? And then we can circle back to this four or five, because I think we do want to decide on the four or five tonight. Not pick a map tonight, but decide on the four or five.
Right, but that might help, if we sort of are discussing what we like and don't like about it, and it might help.
So if we were to do that, I think two that really strike me is having some similarities that we can talk about, and we can look at other maps to combine these. Look at the northern district, there's four district here on draft map F, and then look at District One, the eastern district. You can see the eastern district takes in the whole mobile home park and then goes up, I'm sorry, west. The western district, the orange district, takes up the mobile home park and goes all the way north up through a lot of area that, like I said earlier, seems to be, you know, multifamily housing to the north, and then mobile home park to the south. And then that western district takes in that whole fire area, and that kind of bike path connection between one side to the other, and then goes down and includes the plaza. So the plaza and that area are in the same district. On the districts two and three, it doesn't create a southern district, but that could be something you chose, you could theoretically try and do, is to create a southern district. If you have those two districts, you could basically do a swap between the two in that footprint to try to create two districts that are of different construction. But that's just to look at that. Now let's go back to A, and we'll just talk about the northern and western districts. So now you have this northern district that doesn't go south of the plaza, it still connects east to west mostly. And then the District One on the west doesn't go, it kind of jogs around the left at the northern end. It doesn't go all the way up to the north as much. It still takes in the full mobile home park, but it's a little bit, you know, reduced in that northern portion. So, and then in the south, you have the split along Broadway of District Two and Four in a standalone southern district. So in a way, the trade-offs could be that Districts One and Five don't potentially grow into their larger version of themselves. District Five doesn't allow it to go all the way down in the plaza, but then in the potential benefit is you might get more cohesive Districts Two, Four, and Three of communities that are more tightly connected together with that division along Broadway. Let's go back to C again. I'm sorry, to F again. Again, F, now you have, you can see that entirety of everything that is just south there of the plaza, that entirety there in District Four is a big difference there. And then no southern district.
And so that may be a question. So after looking at this, let's look at what are the questions? What is the benefit or lack of benefit of having a southern district? And what do we think about, for example, that southern district and the communities of interest that it represents?
If you could stop on E and do the comparison, because one thing I want to bring up is Napa. You brought up Broadway, which is, you know, obvious. And by the way, don't I wish we could decide what would go on on that? It's Caltrans. But Napa, Napa Street, on this draft E, my feeling is that the communities of interest on the west side, I think there is a north and south between Napa Street where those communities sort of coalesce. Everybody knows I live down the west side, except for you. I won't say where. But I, but I won't say where, because we're not supposed to say. But I just feel being that Napa is a very strong dividing line for the west side of Sonoma in terms of traffic, and in terms of where people shop, in terms of where the kids go to school. We haven't talked about that. I know that's going to change, because there's a lot of things happening at the school district. But that's sort of a little bit, a little bit of a concern for me, even though I recognize that the mobile home parks are, there is one north of Napa. There are, you know, obviously the two south. And I was interested in the comments, Cedra's comment regarding the senior homes. They are in this sort of south of Napa area, along Studley and so forth. So to me, I look at this District One and this District Four, those two, anyway, feel like communities of interest with the Napa Street there, for me, as
Yes, it's always fun to go.
Someone who shops at Sonoma Market. That's where I live.
Napa Street to Napa Road.
Yeah, yeah, Napa Street, Napa Road, different. Yeah. First Street East, First Street West. I told someone, go to the corner of First and Napa, and realize there was about eight different corners that that could possibly be. So, anyways, I'd like to see the comparison of this draft E, this is the four version, and then the five version of this, just because for me, that dividing line is significant. It may not be for anybody else, and I'm not going to fall on my sword about it, but it just feels that way to me.
So in terms of a version of the five district that best, it'd be B.
That's it. Yeah.
And of course, other people will have different.
I think the one comment I have, I'll go to other comments first. Do you have a comment? Okay. I was just saying to take into account on the west side, the business district on that side, because you do end up splitting up the business district that is on the west side. So that was my only comment when I look at that, and this accounts for either one of those two maps. Councilmember Wellender. Vice Mayor Wellender.
Ron. Excuse me. Going back to an earlier comment about the new fire maps coming out, it seems like if there was a community of interest, it would be kind of reflected in that fire map, which does kind of create that northern zone. And so I can envision that having an influence in how that might be carved out, just given the events we've experienced in the last 10, 15 years, 10 years. The other item is in comment about Healdsburg Avenue, too, is our Broadway has similar conditions on both the east and the west side, as far as there's some businesses, there's still some residential. But there's not a whole lot of difference in how they function and what their needs are. So I'd almost be interested in using that Nathan's Creek as a border, because that would make Broadway more contiguous in terms of being an interest. Just two comments.
Mayor, may I interject? We're at six o'clock, so it'd be time to take a pause and come back to this in your regularly scheduled meeting. I do want to let people know, if you're watching online, that this Zoom meeting will end. You'll just need to restart that link if you're watching online.
And just for that everybody is here, is what we're going to do, is we are going to continue this discussion as part of the regular meeting. So we're going to close this special meeting, and then we're going to reopen the meeting, just procedural information for all of you. So at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to go to our regular meeting.
Do you want to do a motion to continue the public hearing?
Oh, we need a motion to do that. Oh, okay.
I move that we continue the public hearing.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Please, please, not all in favor.
We can do a voice vote, you know. You don't always have to do a vote.
Yeah, it's a special meeting. All in favor of continuing the special meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to our regular meeting.